Mr. Merron, members of the council, you have just been given a three-ring binder. This contains our fiscal year 2019-2020 proposed budget. We are having this first work session with you. We don't expect that there's going to be a lot of detailed discussion about what you're going to find in this budget. This is the first time you're seeing the budget presented to you. And so with that, we wanted to do a quick overview of what we're looking at, highlight some of the things that you're going to find in the budget, some of the changes that we're proposing for next fiscal year over this fiscal year. And as you have questions, please feel free to ask those as we go through this. Quick demographics here, the population of the city of Imperial is now at nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine. We should get twenty thousand a year tomorrow. Square miles, six point five square miles. Median income is eighty-three thousand. That is significant. You will find cities, some cities in Orange County and other areas of California will be at that level. We are the highest median income in all of Imperial Valley by a considerable amount. Total number of employees with the city is seventy-four. You'll notice here that the adopted, you see there three columns or two columns, the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty eighteen, nineteen, and the proposed for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. As comparison, revenues that were adopted for this current fiscal year that we're in was at ten million one hundred and nine thousand dollars and change, well, almost ten million one hundred and ten thousand. The proposed budget for next year revenues will be ten million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand plus. So there's a slight increase in revenues from this fiscal year to next fiscal year. Expenditures, this current fiscal year, nine point eight million, and the proposed will be ten point nine million. So there is some growth in expenditures. Those expenditures, we'll walk through there to show you what some of those growth numbers entail. This is an interesting slide. What this is for is to show you our end-of-year fund balance trends. This takes you back there to the year two thousand, so we're going back nineteen, twenty years here. In two thousand, we had a little better than a million dollars in that end fund balance. And just as a reminder, what the end fund balance is, is when you finish out the year, your fiscal year, and you've paid all the bills, and you're all done, this is how much you have left in your checking account, so to speak. This is how much money you have left. So we call it either an end fund balance or the beginning fund balance for the next fiscal year. This is what you'd have to start with. You'll notice that under Vince Long, when he was the city manager, he was, it looks like one of his priorities was to build up that fund balance to a healthy level. You'll notice that by two thousand and seven, I think that was towards the end of Vince Long's tenure as city manager, the end fund balance was over four and a half million dollars. Now, just as a matter of comparison as well, when you look at these numbers, recognize that back in the year two thousand and two thousand and seven even, your general fund budget was considerably smaller than it is today, as was your population and revenues and everything else. So four point five, four point five plus million dollars is a very, very healthy fund balance. The rule of thumb is that cities should have a bare minimum of twenty percent of your general fund or your operating budget, you should have about twenty percent in fund balance. So if you have a ten million dollar general fund, which is about where we're at, the rule of thumb is to have a bare minimum of two million dollars in your ending or beginning fund balance. Bare minimum. The ideal situation is to have somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty to forty-five percent. And so ideally, the city would have about three to four and a half million dollars in that fund balance. When I started, you'll notice there on two thousand and seventeen, from two thousand and seven until two thousand and seventeen, the fund balance dwindled. What that means is the city was spending that money that you had in your savings account or your checking account, you were spending more than you were taking in those years, in some cases significantly more than you were bringing in in revenues. Until in two thousand and seventeen, there was almost no money left in that fund balance. We were down to around two and a half, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or better, somewhere in that neighborhood. That's a critical situation. And so as we began, and as I came on board and we looked at the budget, we've been kind of stomping our foot about the importance of expanding and building up that fund balance again. You'll see that two thousand and eighteen here, that fund balance, the ending fund balance for the end of this fiscal year will be at about one point five million. So we've successfully been able to build that fund balance back up. That has come through savings, that's come through cutting back, some other expenditures, that's come from having sales tax or properties, mostly sales tax or other tax revenues coming in a little bit over what was projected, and again, we've been very conservative in our budgeting. So we will be at about one point six million at the end of this fiscal year. We're getting closer to that bare minimum, but we're not there yet. We're getting there ahead of schedule. We had hoped that by the end of this fiscal year, we'd be close to a million. We're at about one point six. So we're very pleased to report that we're ahead of schedule on building that back up to where it tends to be. The next slide, this, the slide shows you, it's a nice pie chart there that shows you all the different revenue sources. You'll notice that the largest revenue source is your, well, the largest revenue sources are your property tax there at seventeen percent. You see that at nineteen percent, you have intergovernmental monies, charges for services at sixteen percent. Your sales tax revenues are your largest at twenty-one percent. That's typical. Typically, in California, your sales tax revenues will generally be the largest portion of your revenue source. Now, it's not quite large enough. Ideally, you'd want to see that more at about thirty percent or so. That's kind of balanced. Now, I've seen it a little more than that, I've seen it a little less, but that's kind of the target. What that means is we still have a lot of work to do with economic development and bringing in more, more sales tax revenues. This is a breakdown of sales tax revenues and where they're coming from, which industries. Obviously, our largest portion of sales tax revenues comes through autos and transportation, that's your auto dealerships. Now, I want you to take note, fifty-five percent, that means yes, those are healthy, that's wonderful. It is wonderful, we love that, we don't want that to go down, we like that to continue to grow. But what this means is we need to continue to grow in the other areas, fuel and service stations, business and industry, restaurants and hotels, especially in others. It's not as diversified as we'd like to see that. Oftentimes, when the economy starts to dip and things get tight, or you start entering into a recession type of time, often the first thing that people do is they stop with the big ticket items. They'll try to make their car last a year longer, two years longer than they normally would, and so that has an impact. And so when that happens, the sales tax revenues that we receive from the auto dealerships will obviously go down because they're selling fewer cars. We'll continue to watch that very closely. You'll notice underneath, the total amount of sales tax revenues that are projected to come in for this next fiscal year is two point two million dollars. That's a hundred thousand dollars less than the current fiscal year that we're in. So that's one of the reasons that we're finding our budgeting to be a little bit tight right now, is we're actually projecting less revenues through sales tax than what we receive this current fiscal year. Means that the economy is slowing down just a little bit when it comes to those kinds of things. And those are independent numbers. HDL is who puts these together for us, they track sales tax. City's average home price growth, you'll notice that that's continuing to go up in two thousand and eighteen, we're at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the average home price. That's up from two hundred and forty-one in two thousand and seventeen. That's a good number to see, a lot of areas in California, you're seeing that number go down a little bit this last year. This is a chart just to show you the property tax portion of the revenues that we receive and the breakdown of that. What you need to know is that of every dollar that is collected from a residence or a business, every dollar that is collected in property tax, the city gets forty-two cents. So we get about forty-two percentage, a percentage, a percent of all the money that comes in on property tax. The rest of it goes to those areas that you see there, goes to the school districts, goes to county, and these other, these other entities get their piece of it.
So you're trying to tell me for a hundred thousand dollar property tax, you make forty-two bucks?
For, for, for a hundred dollars in property tax, we get forty-two.
Forty-two cents?
Forty-two dollars.
Forty-two dollars per hundred?
Per hundred. So it's forty-two cents for every dollar collected. We get forty-two percent of the property tax, total property tax that is collected on them. And there are several different areas there, so you know, you've got the Imperial General Fund Tax, you've seen some others in there. Imperial Unified, that is the school district, that's their portion, they collect a big chunk of that. Okay, here's your expenditures, this pie chart shows where all the expenses happen, you'll know with no surprise that police is the, takes up the largest percentage of the, of the general fund. This is general fund expenditures only. So they're at about twenty-nine percent, that's about right. That's generally about where it is, thirty percent, somewhere in there. Fire here is ten percent, that's not bad. You know, generally, if you see in other cities that have their own fire department, that number's going to be considerably higher. We contract out with the county, we're able to get some more bang for our buck by doing that under contract, and that's why the number is more affordable for us. But then you'll see some of the others there, general government, two percent, finance, fourteen percent, information technology, five percent, and so forth. Community development, seven percent. Community services, let's see, where's our, my public services in here? Public services, there we are, twelve percent. Public services is usually the second or third largest, so we're, we're on, we're on mark with these, this is about what you're going to see across the board in other states. This is a quick look at our organizational chart in the city. You'll notice that there are a few contracted services there, which is your fire department again, and the city attorney. So let's talk first about the budget for city council, and these are some of the highlights that you'll notice in your, in your binder that you have. Five elected seats. The proposed expenditures for the city council for this next fiscal year will be at forty-three thousand eight hundred and fifteen, that's what we're proposing. Last fiscal year was at forty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty, so it's a little bit of a dip from what you had last year. We are making some requested or proposed changes here in order to cut back on the funding. And one of the things that you're going to notice throughout, as you read through the binder throughout, is cutting back on travel and training across the board, and that includes the city council. So within the city manager's staff, community development, especially in the police department, we really hash through training and travel and are doing what we believe is the, is the minimum that we can do and still move forward. And so one of the recommendations that we were making is with our annual Washington DC trip, that along with the two staff members that are engaged with the grants and the legislative stuff, that we take one council member or mayor, one member of the council rather than two. That would be our recommend, one of the recommended changes, that will save us some money. The other one is, we have, we have budgeted each year for five council members to go to Calif, to the annual League of California Cities Conference. What we found is that, since I've been here and in previous years, we've never taken five. So we're budgeting for four, if you want to increase that, we can, but we're just budgeting for four instead of five, to show that that's a little more accurate. Safety equipment and clothing, we, we've stripped that down to zero, it's our proposal to strip it down to zero. What that means is, we're not budgeting for shirts for the council or jackets or those kinds of things. We're doing that across the board again, so what you see here is typical. Next is the city treasurer, nothing much to talk about here, the entire, the entire budget there is for salary and benefits, and there's no change, that's moving forward. Your city treasurer is an elected position. This is your city clerk. The majority of the city clerk's budget again is in, is, is in salary, but there are some other things in there, you'll see contracts, services, publication and dues. You'll notice the difference here, our proposed expenditures are a hundred thousand last year, or this current fiscal year was a hundred and forty-one thousand. The biggest difference is there's, there's no elections for this fiscal year. So oftentimes, the clerk's, the clerk's budget has money for the elections that we're required to pay for. Now, as we go through these, I'm also going to outline for you, each department head brought to us as we took a look at this, their requests for, or their needs, things that they would like to add into the budget this year to increase. The request for the city clerk's office was for a part-time records clerk. Our budget, our proposed budget does not allow for that, we just don't have the money, can't really afford that right now. So we placed these items in what's called a contingency group, and we have that added up, so you can see those things, but we've not budgeted for that. For many of these things are in a contingency thing, so you can see what they would cost if you wanted to add them, but they do take us significantly over what we have in revenues. So we just did not afford the part-time records clerk. City attorney, this is a simple slide, there's no changes to this. We project to spend about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's what was budgeted, and we are just rolling that over again, it's not really a rollover because you're not rolling money over, but we're rolling over the same amount for next fiscal year to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we won't let the city attorney have more work than we're already giving, and we're giving quite enough, I'm sure, right now. City manager's office, quick org chart for the city manager's office, you have one contract employee under the city manager, that is your economic development consultant, and you have three full-time employees under the city manager. Let's see, actually, we have, we have more than that because we didn't add HR, which now falls under the city manager.
That's three employees. Contract, you're the contract.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that had the contract. By the way, I'm a contract employee, so you have one contract employee, you're right, thank you for reminding me, that's sometimes I forget that.
And so the administrative assistant is the one that jumps between city manager's office, the front counter, and everywhere else, right?
The cit, the administrative assistant, which was the new hire, that's the new addition, she works out at that front desk, she provides administrative support for the city manager's office, for the city council as well, and provides coverage, customer service coverage, fills in for billing, folks, she's kind of doing a whole lot of stuff up there. She reports directly to Alexis, who's the management analyst. And so those are your three full-time employees, I call them the direct contract employees, some of these I had in my head we were talking about. Here's the city manager's budget. This year versus, or next year versus this year, one point zero seven million is proposed. This current fiscal year, we have nine hundred and forty-two thousand. Again, the major changes is we've added an additional position, that's the, that's the administrative assistant that we have there. We have also now, so that you're aware, rolled human resources under the city manager's office now. So that was an HR director position, it's been reclassified to become an HR analyst, which Adri fulfills, and she reports directly to me under the city manager's office. Other things you'll see there is we've reduced the training, just like every other department, our travel and training. I will not be going to ICMA this next fiscal year, we're going to save some money, we've taken from Alexis, her California League conference, she'll not be attending that. We've stripped out some of the training again to be able to get this budget.
Just, can you check back up one more, one slide, please?
Yeah.
We have even, human resources in here, but over here, you're telling me you're taking it out?
No, it, it's right, yeah. And this, the org chart, that's where it was, this is the city manager's organization, so it's a little deceiving, so these aren't departments that you see, this is everything that falls under the city manager's office.
They're divisions.
Okay. But for budgeting, human resources wouldn't be there?
Yes, it is there now. We've, we've got it in a separate category, but it, so, does it, does it fall under the city manager's budget, or did you take it out of the city manager's budget?
We brought it into the city manager's budget for purposes of the presentation, but it is kept as a separate line item.
So you'll still see the line items on HR, so it's there, it's broken out, but for the presentation purposes, organizationally, it falls under the city manager.
So there shouldn't be no separate budget for HR?
There is for HR, a separate budget.
But it ain't for salaries?
You'll see a salary there as well for HR, but that's-
But your salaries rolled over into your budget?
No, if you look at this first page right here that you have within the budget, maybe that, that, just a little bit. If you go down to line item number ten, that's where, that's the city manager's office, and then if you see line item number thirteen, there's taking human resources, so taking human resources, they are broken out of the budget. But for purposes of the presentation, we did include it within the city manager's department.
Okay. And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm reading, the way I'm reading this is, right now, we have a contract employee plus three in the city manager's office.
Contract employee is me.
Yes.
Plus three, that's Alexis.
Adri.
That's Adri.
And Emery.
And that's Emery.
Okay. So that's your three right there.
Yes.
Then we have human resources as one and one.
Human resources, again, reports directly to the city manager, is part of the city manager's office for reporting purposes now, but I did misspeak, and yes, we, we did break that out, I didn't realize that we had, we have broken that out now separately, so you have an individual line item budget there for HR, and you'll see that in your, in your line. Okay. Let's see, and then, there's another item of note here, you see that bottom thing that says last retro, retrospective liability installment made this fiscal year. We had about a million dollars that needed to be paid off on that. This fiscal, this coming fiscal year, we will make our last installment payment of two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we no longer will have that liability, that will all be paid off. So that's two hundred and sixty-plus thousand dollars that we won't have to pay, not next fiscal year, but the next one. So we're, we're making our last payment this next fiscal year. And if, Laura can explain a little bit about that, what that is? It, it has to do with our liability coverage, Laura, why don't you talk about that a little bit?
It was a general liability coverage for JGA, about five years ago, it started down at, we went with installment, we could afford to get all of mine, so this would be our last, we would be looking to the JGA.
Okay, any questions with that? Okay, community development, there's the org chart for that, you will see the new code enforcement officer is under community development. You also see engineering, engineering is, is that your, is, those are contracted, correct, or, or is this your, this is HCS? There's their budget, proposed expenditures for this next fiscal year, eight hundred and one thousand, that's an increase from six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Your changes, again, we hired a new code enforcement physician. Capital improvement projects, we've got six point three million dollars, are those LTA monies there? Tell me where those are.
There's LTA, circulation, LPE.
It's a combination of all the different road monies and that that we get.
Correct.
So that's the six point three million dollars in, in projects that will be going on next year.
So our change was a code enforcement officer?
That's one of the changes that, that we're, that we're dealing with, yes.
Okay. It's almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference.
Well, there's other increases in there as well, the cost to provide services has gone up, you know, that's, that's going to happen across the board. So you're seeing increases in salaries have happened, those, those things are in place, so you're going to see increases across the board.
I'm just checking negative the numbers for one employee, because it didn't happen.
No, no, that, that's going to be, the, the biggest change is we've added an employee there, but you're going to have other increases across the board, whether you've added an Community services department, eight full-time employees, five part-time employees, and twenty-eight temporary employees. This falls under Ember. You'll see there that we've got a parks division now, you, you're aware of all of those changes that were made. Here's the proposed expenditures, the proposed budget of one point two ninety-two million, last fiscal year is at one point two eight-three million, so a very smaller increase there on that one. Again, new, new hire, park superintendent, and this was part of the restructuring, so it wasn't actually an additional position, it was the recap classification of a preview, previously existing position. One item of note there, you see the Worthington Square lease, the, the building, the space that they're taking up in Worthington Square right now, that lease expires in November. We have notified Rick Brown with Worthington Square that we will not be renewing that lease. The lease is a hundred and how much, Laura, a hundred and what, thousand dollars a year that we pay in that lease?
Hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten thousand plus, and so rather than paying a hundred and ten thousand dollars in lease money to them, we're gonna, we're gonna relocate Ember and her folks into the library and other areas.
So we gave them a road and still paid the rent?
That was part of, that was part of the agreement with Worthington Square that was made years ago.
Correct.
That we would, that we would guarantee lease of a certain amount of square footage in order for them to be able to make that work.
Another question for you, Amber, does, do we still get funding for the pool for the summer programs from other agencies?
Imperial Irrigation District provides some, basically, usually it's a two thousand dollar grant for all the cities and institutes that provide programs for the summer.
Thank you.
There were some requests made there that we've not budgeted for, that we've rolled into contingency, it was for some equipment, one of those is for a wood chipper, another was for a trailer, we just felt like right now, we don't have the money for that, so we're going to put those off right now. We do want to talk briefly about special events, and this is an item that we're going to want to talk in more detail with, with you about on the twenty-ninth, on that meeting. Just a couple of items of information for you only right now, Imperial Market Days, the cost to put the series of market days events on, was it about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand and some change? We generated about seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue, therefore, it was about seventy-three thousand plus that costs the general fund to put on that celebration. Wonderful celebration, we want to keep those things going, but we do, it, it does cost us more to put that event, those events on than, than we generate the revenues, just the way it is here in this area. There were some other events that went on, the Calif, for, California Midwinter Fair and Fiesta, the council wanted the city to participate with that with a booth. The total cost of doing that was at eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, that's in overtime, manpower, equipment, those kinds of things. So that's the, that's the price tag of having the booth down there at the fair.
So we're going to talk about this on the twenty-ninth?
We're going to talk about this in more detail on the twenty-ninth, but I'm giving you numbers that, we are not proposing our budget money for Midwinter Fair next year. Again, on the twenty-ninth, you all are going to come back after you've looked at the budget and give us direction, things that you want added, things you want taken out, whatever it is. And then Pride of Lights and the Christmas in a Small Town, although those events are put on by the Chamber of Commerce, the city does provide some support. The price tag of that support is sixteen thousand forty-four dollars and eight cents. We, we have all these down in the pen, we track how much overtime is gone and where this is for that. That's how much the city is, is providing in, in support for those two events that we're shaping this. Next, we'll talk finance department here really quick, and we're on schedule, so I'm okay. There's your, there's your org chart for the finance department, you have full, four full-time employees in finance. Their budget proposed for next year is one point five million, that's down from almost one point seven million this fiscal year. Changes there is an increase to their public services contract for garbage, it's the CPI increase that, that is part of the contract. That's a past third cost, so that's not going to have any impact as far as the general fund goes. We'll, we'll generate revenues and then pay those things back out for future fees. Requests that were not budgeted for, there was a request for a full-time accounting assistant one and a full-time administrative analyst, we just don't have the money, so those, those are taken again and budgeted for the request. Fire, no changes to the service, we will continue to maintain that contract, it's a great contract. Last fiscal year, you see there, you were at, or the current fiscal year, at one million seventeen thousand, that'll go up slightly to one million forty-eight thousand, it's about a three percent cost of living increase. I have to tell you that, that the county fire is terrific to work with, they, they are, they, they are great, they're incredibly professional, incredibly competent, we're very fortunate to be able to work under contract with them. Without that contract, you'd be, you'd be spending considerably more than that. We're very fortunate to be able to work under contract with them. Without that contract, you'd be you'd be spending considerably more than this to maintain your own in-house fire. It would be, so we're we're fortunate to have them. Information Technology Services, there's the org chart. It's a Department of One. Uh, and Alex is a contract employee. He works under contract for the city. You're gonna see a big difference here in this current fiscal year budget. Next, it's almost doubled in size. There are some reasons for that. Some of the changes, there's some new software upgrades that have to happen. Uh, those, Alex can certainly speak more intelligently than I can about that, but in essence, uh, we're long overdue for many of those upgrades. The server, for example, the servers that we've we've got do not support Windows ten. Is that correct, Alex? So we need to get new servers in order to be able to upgrade to Windows ten and beyond. Uh, and then there's some other things there that need to be taken care of. Requests that are not included, uh, that we've not budgeted for, there was a request for a full-time G I S analyst and for a for a full-time wireless technician. All of these requests for manpower, you need to know are legitimate requests. There are legitimate needs here. And they are things that would greatly enhance our ability to provide services to our community as well as get the job done. And they would likely in many ways create some efficiencies and probably save us some money in some areas. The challenge that we have is we've got to balance that growth again. We've gotta balance where we're adding bodies, what can we afford today to do, and what do we need to just sort of hold off on until we're in a better position to do that. And so these are two positions that are legitimately needed, but in talking with Alex, we're just gonna have to hold off a bit on on both of these. Um, Alex, other big changes, Alex or Laura there, when they see going from two sixty-seven to five oh one, that's also because we've taken all of the I T needs throughout the city, and we now budgeted it all into the I T budget. In past practices, each department had their own I T budget, and now we're consolidating it all under I T. And and Alex does manage that. Okay, the police department. Police department is the largest, well, not the largest department, but the most expensive, and I say that that's the way it always is. Uh, it it costs money to put those officers out there to put their lives on the line and protect our community. We have eighteen sworn police officers and four full-time employees. In those eighteen, that includes our chief and our captain. So our two upper management, executive level management, uh, are are part of the eighteen sworn police officers. Just so that the council understands, there's a rule of thumb, I don't know how accurate it is, because it depends on really more calls for services, what kind of community you have, how much commercial you have. Uh, is it a a more of a low-income community? There's lots of things that determine the need for what 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 police needs you have are and and the size. But the general, yes, the men or rule of thumb is at least one officer, one to one and a half officers per thousand people in your population. And you can see that we're considerably less than that. We've got almost twenty thousand, we're eighteen officers. That said, we're one of the safest cities in California. Our police officers do a great job. Um, and we're very fortunate to have a lot of law enforcement living in Imperial and other great benefits here, so. Let's talk about their budget. There's your increase. Uh, the proposed expenditures are three point one million. Last year's, uh, or this current fiscal year budget is at two point six million. It's about an increase of about three percent, I believe. Is that right, Laura? You're gonna crunch that real quick?
About sixteen percent increase.
Fifteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Okay. My math is bad. I'm looking at that going three. How did I get three out of that? I'll have to go back and figure out when that. Okay, about sixteen percent, fifteen percent increase. Here's the changes. Two new police officers, one additional is pending for this next fiscal year. One new police records clerk was hired. And the, one of the significant increases is their dispatch contract has increased, is increased by about sixty thousand dollars. That increase is we're going from El Centro, who was doing our dispatch, we're moving that over to to the county. There's lots of reasons for that. The level of service that we believe we get, that we can get with the county, plus we use county fire already. We just feel like there's more more room to expand there, and then in the long run, it'll be much better for the city. It's been something that we've talked about for a number of years, and we determined at this point that it's the right move.
When is this happening?
This will take place in, there's there's a period of time that they have to do the conversion chief. When do we expect it will be?
If they're on a county count, uh, the order supervisors, but we're hoping for July.
We'll bring it before the council.
Yeah, this comes before you for, because it is a contract change, so this is what's good.
And the other question is, the two new police officers, that does not include the new hire we have, right? So there's him plus.
Plus.
Right now, we're doing backgrounds on two officers.
And no, that would considerably bring these two new officers on.
We will be fully staffed this fiscal year with with the old things that you have.
Twenty? No, eighteen.
That'll bring you up to eighteen?
Eighteen. That brings you up to eighteen, so that brings you to fully staff.
We've had Nick and Susan in the park.
Oh, got it.
There were a number of requests, obviously, in there that we were unable to fund. Uh, one full-time executive assistant, we don't have the money for that at this time. Two full-time, two, additional two full-time police officers simply don't have the money at this time. Two patrol cars to go along with that, don't have the money. Uh, two command units, don't have the money. So those are things that we will not be able to fulfill.
Does also this include the officers that are out on details that we're getting money for?
Yes.
So those hires are being paid tools out of lunch, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So for example, Best Team, Hyda, those things, they're included in that that number, that eighteen.
Okay, so we are hiring those numbers?
We are what?
We're hiring those numbers out of out of that Hyda and Best money?
Yeah, some of that money is coming out of Best, and there's not a lot out of Best, but Hyda gives us a significant amount of money to offset those costs.
Okay. Don't wanna get in trouble with others, like other cities have.
And then finally, your public services department. This is Jackie's group. You're gonna notice some changes there in the organizational chart. You see a power division there. Uh, we'll talk some more about that. You've got a total of twenty-eight full-time employees in public services. That's your largest department. This is general fund only, so when we take a look at our budgets, we also have the two enterprise funds. We're not presenting those to you at this time. This is only general fund, so this does not include water and sewer. The proposed expenditures is at one point three three million. This current fiscal year, we are at nine hundred and forty thousand. You're gonna see some changes there. One is the creation of a shop division. What the shop division will be for is to take care of vehicle maintenance and things. Now, they're doing that now, but they're sort of rolling that around in some other areas. The desire that Jackie has, and I think it's a good idea, is to create a shop, in essence, and and have that, uh, and and have those monies, I guess, if you were to count it separately from some of the others. There are two full-time positions that we are proposing to add here, and we'll talk about the importance of these. One is an electrician supervisor. That goes into your power department. It's that we're proposing to create. The other is a building services worker. The building services worker is in essence a janitor. We do not have a janitor at this time. We utilize our animal control officer, take her off the street often to do janitorial work, as well as subsidizing with other staff help. Uh, the parks department, for example, has been in there quite a bit, uh, filling in and emptying trash cans and vacuuming and dusting and doing those kinds of things, as have Jackie's, some of Jackie's folks, as have each of us with our offices. Uh, we we can't continue to do that. We need somebody who is dedicated to cleaning the three main buildings, which is this building, the library, Worthington Square while we're still there, and the the city hall slash police station. So you notice the carpets here, they start to get some wear and tear. This person would be responsible for scheduling carpet cleanings and shampoos, and and we'll have a budget for that. Will be responsible for making sure that this room is put together and ready for your meetings. Will take care of cleaning the other buildings, cleaning bathrooms and those kinds of things. And so, uh, there you have it. Now, there's a significant portion of both of these positions that will be funded through wa- through your enterprise funds, because they will be doing work for enterprise funds as well. And so you can go in and say, well, this percentage of what they do will be for water and this percentage for sewer, and the rest will go everywhere else, which is general fund. So when you look at two added positions, the reason that we selected these is there's a significant portion of it that that is funded through the enterprise fund. That makes it so that the general fund isn't quite as hard hit, and they are needed positions. You see some things there that are C I P projects. We've got the wastewater treatment plant that you know about, uh, continuum street, uh, projects. There are some purchases that will be be made. Uh, so there you have there.
This is all general fund money?
This is general fund only, so we're not touching the water and the sewer right now.
I know you touched on your building services worker in kind of detail, but we just skipped over the power electrician guy.
Yeah, that's, and and Jackie can talk about the electrician supervisor and what that position will do, and we've we've had it before. And we're trying to go back to that. There's some, there's a reason behind it. Go ahead, Jackie.
Yeah, we're proposing to bring back on staff a full-time electrician. As we've gotten bigger, with this getting older, uh, we've shown in the past where we save significance amounts of money by having an in-house electrician versus calling or contracting the subcontractors. They would take care of the street lights, the equipment for water, wastewater, any electrical repairs, and our modifications needed throughout the city. And as you take over Highway eighty-six, you have five street lights that you did, you saw. Just just didn't have a lump. So it's really all we're doing is bringing back a position that we've had. We've talked in the last two years without feeling it. We have to change the job, but we think we're just actually proposing to fill it. Uh, we ran some real quick numbers just in the water, wastewater, which I don't understand as enterprise. Uh, and we could have saved seventy thousand dollars just as last year if all we paid us to contract this, to do services. It's been a very, like, yearbook. The first year that we proposed this, we showed an actual savings of almost three hundred thousand dollars.
With our electrician?
With our electrician.
So we have an electrician right now, but we need to.
We have a position.
We have a position.
It's not good. We've carried the position since, uh, for the last six years.
We have general maintenance workers.
Yes.
So this guy would be an electrician supervisor?
Well, he would be an electrician. We're we're looking at hiring a journeyman electrician that way he can get into the higher voltage work.
Okay. But he has to be hired in a supervisor position?
Kind of sort of maybe, I don't know, maybe point the phrase, but he'd be like Alex, he'd be a one-man band.
Okay. Thank you.
Here's a general fund expenditure breakdown. This this shows you salary versus operations versus capital improvement. The rule of thumb is that you want your salaries to be fifty percent or less of your general fund. We're at forty-seven percent there. Uh, with operations and administrative costs, it's about forty-eight, five percent of capital improvement. This is again a good balanced budget, uh, as as far as where the expenditures are are targeted. If the salary and benefit, uh, section starts creeping above fifty percent, we know that's a red flag, that we need to kinda take a look at things. Doesn't necessarily mean it's wrong, it just means, okay, why is that happening? What's taking place? What are the reasons behind that? Do we need to, do we need to look elsewhere? So we're at forty-seven percent. That, based on the budget that we have, that's that's appropriate. I think, uh, if if I recall correctly, somebody mentioned that that Vince Long used to have that same kind of Laura, do you remember? Does anybody remember Vince used to push for that as well? Fifty percent. So that's ongoing. That's that's kind of a standard in city government, uh, and and so we're there. And then finally, just in conclusion, uh, we do have scheduled in two weeks a special city council meeting on May twenty-ninth. There's some things there that we're gonna wanna talk about in more detail. One is we're gonna go through this budget again, after you've had the the next two weeks, go through your look at it, ask questions, uh, decide if you agree, if you disagree, what kinds of things that you'd like to change, whatever that happens to be. We wanna talk about smart spending, smart growth. We'll get into that a little bit more about what that is, but basically being balanced. There's a lot of things going on in the city. We wanna ensure that we're we're following the schedule, that these things are sustainable. That also includes, when I talk about sustainability, that also includes your fund balance, that end of the year or beginning of year fund balance number. And again, why it's so number, I I know you're sick and tired of hearing the harp on the importance of of maintaining a a healthy fund balance. I'm gonna harp on it some more here. We'll have a discussion about that. Uh, next level, event planning. Again, we wanna take a look at all of the events that we do, where we're spending the money, and how do we propose moving forward? This includes market days, it includes a chamber events, it includes, uh, any of the other events, that movies in the park, any of the other events that we do. Oftentimes, what happens is you have what's called event creep happening. Uh, in other words, uh, things are going along, you've got your scheduled major events, and before you know it, the number of events is doubled in size, because somebody had a great idea here, somebody had a creative idea here, and it can get out of control. I don't think we're out of control or anywhere close to it, but we like to sit down and take a look at these events and find out, okay, is there another way uh, that we can do these? Can we bump them up a little bit? How are we spending our money on events? How can we, how can we more wisely spend the money and put on even better events than we're doing now? Classification compensation study, your class and comp study is complete. You've accepted that. We're gonna wanna talk about that in two weeks. Uh, get into a discussion on implementation now. What do you want to implement? What is important now? Where are the priorities? How you wanna move forward with that? We've got this study that we paid for. What do we do with it? Transparency. One of the things that I've been pushing, uh, since I got here is transparency. You all know that. When we deal with a budget, part of that transparency is sitting down, so when we outline a budget for you, we're trying to line item as much as we can in there. Do away with as much as possible, things like, um, special, you know, this is for new vehicles, or this is for equipment, or this is for training. And training is one that sometimes you see a lot of, and there's just a number in there, but it doesn't really tell you what the training is for. Or if you have numbers in the training column, they're estimates right now. We've been working very hard to 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 drill down to that, to give more detail, and to be more accurate in what we're projecting we will need. So with the training budget, training and and traveling budgets, for example, for each department, I've required that each department head present with what they're asking for detailed documents on each item that includes what the registration fees are, what the, uh, what the travel costs are going to be, hotel costs, per diem costs, everything that surrounds that particular uh, training experience that they're being required to do there, as well as give a justification for why the training. And it can be something that is critical in nature. In other words, if we don't con- uh, conduct a training, we will find ourselves, uh, in violation of law or whatever it is. Or is it a class two, which is money, or is it something that prevents us from being able to be more efficient, whatever it is? And so there's some justifications, and that's the whole transparency question. That is stuff that we'll also talk about in two weeks. I will stand if there are any questions. I apologize. I went about ten minutes late. We did start fifteen minutes late, so.
We did. Any questions? Well, I got a question that will wait till the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, please feel free, any questions that you do have, if you'll submit those to me. I prefer, if you can, send me an email with the questions. I'm gonna obviously use department heads and the rest of the staff to kinda help give you accurate information. If you can't, feel free to call me, but I may not have an answer for you anyway.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Say none. Thank you very much.
Yep.
This will end our workshop. We'll take a quick five-minute break, then define rules, and start as soon as we can. This will end our workshop. We'll take a quick five minute break, then go on, please, and start soon again.
Sir, how you doing?
I'm doing good.
Sir, how are you doing? Busy? I didn't even get home. What's that?
He said, keep you off the streets and that again.
Yeah, maybe get a taxi, go home and change. Oh, it's my turn.
Okay, it is seven seventeen on call speed and order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Dale?
Here.
Councilmember Regina?
Here.
Councilmember Tucker?
Here.
Mayor Alvarado?
Here.
And the record was told that Councilmember Peptil is the opposite side.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and keptal of allegiance, please.
Pardon me, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we do have one, item G one, which is the public hearing for the development impact fees. We are, uh, asking the council to, um, table that, I guess. We, uh, I guess it's not tabled, we're going to renotice that. And so it will be, I don't know if the proper word would be continued or tabled or...
Yeah, it's good.
Renotice, table and renotice, so that comes off your general fund.
Okay. So will we table or notice item G one, the Public Hearing Discussion Act on Development Impact Fees?
Notice, is there anything you want to clarify?
Well, I, 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 given the understanding that there are quite a few folks in the audience that want to address that matter, I would ask that they not get into the substance, but I think there are some procedural things that they would like to address the council about. And, 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 uh, you, you could accommodate that, uh, under D two, for example. That's where you hear comments about matters that are on the agenda. But to the extent that, uh, when you, when you get to G one, the staff recommendation is to table. And, and since it's a public hearing, staff is going to renotice it. There are specific requirements of the law in terms of what kind of notices required. Uh, and, uh, and I think that folks want to address procedurally that, as well as the, uh, H one, which is on for discussion only in any case, but to the extent it addresses capacity fees. Uh, I, I think from a developer standpoint, they kind of bump those in with Jeff, even though they are two separate.
So with that, we'll, if we do have public appearances on those matters, we'll, uh, address them at, uh, when we get to public appearances. I'll let you guys know about that. Okay, thank you. Um, so with that, any other adjustments to the agenda?
That's the only.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Actions, uh, taken, closed session?
There's nothing to report out of closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So moving on to D one. This is for matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address counsel concerning item, any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand to be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place any time, uh, to place a time limit on each person's presentations to three minutes. And if requested, longer presentations, uh, uh, be requested to submit, submitted to the council in writing. So this is for items that are not on the agenda. Um, we have one over here, sir. Please step up, please.
Yes, sir, we would like the, uh, council to look into a speed bump on Joshua Tree and Sandwood Glen.
So what is your name, sir?
Oh, Gregory Johnston, twenty-three forty-nine Brushwood Avenue. And that would be Brushwood and Joshua Tree. We've had a lot of... We've had cars hit and we've had the light posts hit because people go around there too fast. And we have kids on, on the corner of it and kids across the street that are still little and they like to run onto the street.
And this is the intersection of Joshua Tree and...
And Brushwood.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. We'll look into that. I had another one. Uh, Susan, you were next. And then we'll jump up to you, sir.
Good evening, City Council. Susan Peredes, representing the Imperial Chamber of Commerce, one oh one East Fourth Street in Imperial. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Imperial Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the city for their support of the chamber and its signature events we've held for our community. Just as you are tackling the difficult task of setting and approving the city's budget for the upcoming year, the chamber is in the process of putting together our budget for the next year. The chamber is appreciative of the in-kind support that the city has provided for the past thirty years for our two signature events. And as we look forward to great things in the coming year, including increased support of our existing businesses, inviting new businesses to our community, and orchestrating longstanding premier signature events, we also look forward to working with the city to continue that support for the betterment of the community. This being said, the chamber is open to discussing any changes the city anticipates so we can plan accordingly with respect to our budgeting process. Um, we sat in, as you are aware, in the budget workshop and, um, saw the, the dollar amount that is spent on our two signature events. And so if possible, we would request a breakdown of that, so we might see where we can alleviate and take on some of that um, in order to work, to accommodate the city and continue the events. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Sir?
Bill, my name is Michael Quinn. Um, I live over at the Assistant Ranch Community here in Carrap. Uh, I want to talk about, uh, stray cats, uh, feral cats, and I handed out some paperwork. It starts out with the CDC report. And this is, uh, numbers for the United States. Uh, each year between sixty to seventy dogs ha- they become infected with, uh, rabies, and then, uh, more than two hundred and fifty cats are reported that they have rabies. Do you have the, the United States? Then I have a letter from, uh, California Department of Public Health, and this is a declaration of rabies in the areas, and our county is on that list. And this was, uh, signed by Karen L. Smith, M.D., December twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Then I have a total number of pets owned in the United States. And, uh, cat owners, ninety, these are by millions. Uh, cat owners is ninety-four point two million, and dog owners eighty-nine point seven. I understand that dogs are bigger and have a bigger bite, but what I'm trying to show is, uh, cats, they can carry the rabies because they don't get vaccinated and nobody takes care of them. They just sip food out there, water, and, um, that kind of thing. And I, I, I want to change that because like my, my property where I live is being damaged. It's, uh, the cats come over, the neighbor is feeding the cats, they have the garage open, and the cats go in and out. And, uh, I, I know there's another location over there by, uh, Brining Iron on the other side, they have the same issue. So, and then I have Kleksko, the city ordinance for Kleksko. I know it's not our ordinance, but to me, this sounds like a good place to start. No person shall, shall purposely or knowingly feed or in any manner provide food to feral cats in any public park, public driveway, or public property owned or operated by the city of Kleksko unless otherwise allowed by law or authorized by the city. No pa- no person shall feed a feral cat on private property in a manner that creates harmful health or senti- sedation, condition, destruction of property, uh, attraction of coyotes, rats, or other vermin. To me, that, that's a good place to start, or, or you walk around town, you see cats running all over the place. Um, I'm just wondering if we can ha- look into it, maybe get some type of city ordinance together so us property owners have something to stand on.
Do we not have an ordinance currently for this? I was thinking of talking to your work, no? Okay. I think it's something we should look into. Um, uh, I wasn't aware of this, uh, but just driving down Pearl Avenue, I think it was this weekend, there was two dead cats.
There was one out there, but they got sprayed that, uh, car out here in the parking lot right now.
Okay, so, uh, hope it's not mine. Um, but yeah, I think there is a problem. I know we have to, as dog owners, we have to license our dog, we have to make sure they get vaccinated, but what about these cattle? I know I also have cats, make sure they get vaccinated and all that good stuff, so. I think it's a good start. Uh, maybe we could look into this? Please? So, let me bring it back. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. I'll move into, uh, D two, for matters that are, are on the agenda. If you wish to address counsel concerning the items appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. Do we have anybody? Sir?
Good evening, Marty Point Company. Um, it's been a long, uh, as, uh, Mr. Maria, City Attorney, speaking of the issues, uh, regarding the development impact fees that were on the agenda tonight. Um, we totally agree that that should move forward. We got some new updated information, haven't had a chance to take a look at, but at the same time, we ask that, which I wasn't aware of until I actually got the agenda and looked at it, um, there's also a separate item for water service capacity increases. And as Mr. Maria is saying, that they really kind of go hand in hand. Um, one thing I want to point out, like to make the request, I think it's fair to everybody on the city's side as far as the developer side as well, builders, subcontractors, contractors. Uh, I, he's kind of going through this, this kind of program right now, or changes, trying to increase their, their fees. And they created a workshop. So far, we've had two workshops that were very informative of what both sides needed and, and, uh, what I'd like to do is make the request that possibly, maybe as your services director and the city manager will own a couple of workshops and hear our side, uh, and also understand a little bit more. Along with that, the questions I immediately had is how soon are we going to follow attendance maps, you know? Uh, you can't catch up in the past, and some of these, your circulation rates have almost tripled in fees all at one time, uh, which has a significant impact. As most of you know, I have a multi-family project coming up. Could make a significant difference of the fees, uh, paid if these were put in place right away. A lot of times like subdivisions or multi-family projects, these, these are months or years in the works. Months to get bank loans, months for appraisals, all those kind of things. So we already have budgets set in place. We have loans set in place, uh, you know, in some cases, you know, fees or rental rates already set in place. So to be thrown and just voted on tonight by council of, you know, a new, uh, start date, end date, or, or gradual increase, which we see is fair over the years, all the other cities, and all of a sudden, oh my God, we need money, make sure they charge us a lot of that. You can't make it up from just one group of developers developing today or this year. And some that has to take gradual. So we would first ask, I think Representative Victoria is here. Who's here? Yeah, I think six tonight, you said. That maybe workshops put together and the local builders, developers, subcontractors, contractors can attend to workshops and understand the needs and requirements. You know, looking at that developer impact fee, I mean, it's projected now thirty-five years and all these great things that are happening. But I think I need some time to study it and maybe SAP's got it all figured out already. But like I say, up to the last minute tonight, I got a new version of it that increased fees even more. And so with one, we need some time, and two, we need some input. So I don't know what your compact fees on that, but that's what my request would be. And I'm sure any other contractor was probably noticed or should have got noticed regarding water sewer or the impact fees would probably agree with it. I would say in the IID meeting we went to, there was probably twenty contractors, developers, builders. And I'm sure if it was properly noticed, if we got a personal invitation, phone call from IID, if it was properly, the message gets out, and I'm sure you're going to need that kind of participation as well.
Something we'll take into consideration. Something we could do. Better look into. Thank you, sir. Anybody else for matters appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to E one proclamation. Presentation proclamation made as a census twenty twenty kickoff month in the city.
And Mr. Mayor, City Treasurer Stacy Cox is here, the guest. I don't know if she wants to introduce him or...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. With the start kickoff, or the start of the census starting to ramp up again for April first of twenty twenty, we in Imperial Valley have started working with our complete count committees. One of the things that we're being asked by the federal census and in participation of this is to do a kickoff and a proclamation from the individual cities. Tonight, here we have Mr. Eduardo Hernandez, he's with the federal census for census twenty twenty, and he has a little bit of information he wants to give you. And before we go into our proclamation for the kickoff.
Great, thank you.
Hello, good evening, Mayor. But I know at City Council, I'm thankful for the opportunity to kind of talk to you real quickly about the twenty twenty census. My name is Dr. Eduardo Hernandez. I'm a partnership specialist working for the twenty twenty census. As you know, the decennial census happens every ten years. The Federal Government has committed to mobilize our efforts throughout the nation to ensure that every single state, county, community, and cities and municipalities have a complete count when it comes to the twenty twenty census. We're going to be launching for the first time in the history of the Census Bureau. Everyone's going to be able to go online and fill out the questionnaires. The first time that we're doing this digital. But we also understand that there's a digital multiverse with gaps in broadband and a lot of households may not be able to access their internet or do not have internet to access. We're partnering up with the state of California who has invested over a hundred and fifty million dollars to distribute funding throughout all the fifty-eight counties in California. And those money will trickle down to the cities. As part of our effort for the Federal Census Bureau, our main goal is to couch everyone once and only once and in the right place. And as you already may know, when it comes to the Census Bureau and when it comes to the decennial questionnaires, it's really about power and it's really about money. I say it's about power because the data that's collected from the decennial census in twenty twenty is going to determine the appropriations of about six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars every single year for the next ten years. That's a lot of money at stake if we don't have a complete count. It's estimated that every single person that decides not to have a complete count is estimated that between nineteen hundred dollars and two thousand dollars are not brought down to the local community each year for ten years. That's about twenty thousand dollars per person that does not fill out the survey. We are committed to ensure that we're working in a partnership with our trusted partners. And who else to come forward and be our trusted partners? But that's city, government, community-based organizations, grassroots organizations, and individuals who can relay the message about the importance of the twenty twenty census. Regardless of their citizen status, regardless of anything else, we know there's a lot of negative forces happening right now. We are living in extraordinary times. That's going to call for extraordinary measures to ensure that every single person gets counted. Because those dollars come down through the federal government, to the states, to the cities to help support the infrastructure of roadworks, the police station. Everything that you're hearing and addressing here for your city is very important that the city of Imperial gets a complete count. And I really have to take my hat off to Stacy Cox, who's been really in a leadership position in helping, trying to develop the complete count committees. And there's funding that I'm working with, with the state of California that already has come down to the county of Imperial. We're also working with the administrative office staff. And they are right now creating methods to trickle that money down to cities who have developed the complete count committees. And there's no creating any wheel. We already have templates, we already have the technical assistance that we can provide. Nothing needs to be created from scratch. We have the models, we have the frameworks. All it is is getting people together to ensure that those hard-to-count communities in your municipality are reached, educated, and told about the importance of the census.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the info. Anybody have any questions? All right, seeing none, why don't I go down there and present this proclamation? Let me stand on this side so I can get the microphone. All right, so this is proclamation for census twenty twenty kickoff month, May twenty nineteen. Says, whereas the United States Census Bureau is required by Article one, section two of the United States Constitution to conduct an accurate count of population every ten years. And whereas a complete and accurate count of California's population is essential, as the state receives approximately seventy-seven billion annually in federal funding that relies in part on census data. And whereas the data collected by the decennial census determines the number of seats each state has in the United States House of Representatives and is also used to distribute billions of dollars in federal funds to state and local governments. And whereas regions throughout Imperial County have diverse communities and demographic populations that are considered hard to count and are at risk of being missed in the twenty twenty census. And whereas the twenty twenty census requires cross-sector collaboration, partnership, and coordination between city, county, and state government, communities, faith-based organizations, education, businesses, and other sectors. And whereas the city of Imperial is kicking off its outreach and engagement efforts in May twenty nineteen for the twenty twenty census. And the city of Imperial is committed to robust outreach, communication strategies, focusing on reaching the hardest to count individuals. And now, therefore, I, Robert Alparano, the mayor of the city of Imperial, state of California, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty nineteen as census twenty twenty kickoff month in the city of Imperial. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Here, just get a picture. Come on, Stacy. Come on, you gotta join us. It just wastes up so you don't get my three pats. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Counsel, if I could briefly just let you know, I'm... Thank you very much, Mr. Chapman, for giving me the opportunity to work on behalf of the city of Imperial with the complete count committee. I'm also on the complete count committee for my full-time employment at the city of El Centro, so it's kind of a good fit. But I do want to invite all of you to participate if you can. I'm going to be working with Mr. Chapman's office to, as far as getting the word out at our events and some type of advertising in our social media. But you as council members are... do speak on behalf of your city and you represent your city in multiple areas and in multiple meetings and events. And if any of you are interested in participating also or receiving information that you can disseminate to all your other groups that you work with, please let me know. And I'll be glad to try and get some of the information to you. It's very important that we try and make sure we get a complete count because the money... I don't... I'm working at the city of El Centro, I work with grants. And I don't think anybody here that works with grants can deny that the demographics received from census is what it's based on. That's where you're going to get your funding and, you know, your allocations. And it's all based off the demographics you get from census. So it's imperative we get a complete count as best as possible. So if any of you are interested, please let me know. We do have numerous subcommittees that are being formed from the complete count committee that you guys could be involved in. And I will, of course, be returning the information back to you. But if, you know, at the very least, we definitely need to try and get some of the funding that's been brought down to the county for purchasing handouts and takeaways or advertising or whatever so that we can get the word up at the city of Imperial, so.
I have a question.
Okay.
I don't mind that we can find out what the true number is. But my curiosity though is why would it change how many representatives you're going to have in a state? And if that's twenty twenty, is that... It kind of sounds politically motivated to me. It doesn't... I see the money and I hope we get some of the money because I see a lot of stuff in the state. We don't... We don't get a lot of the services done. In fact, this county's roads, I'm hearing now, it's going to cost somewhere close to north of a billion dollars to repair it the way it's supposed to be done. Whereas if you were in Arizona, you could do that for probably half the cost. And we all know where that comes from. But my question is, why twenty twenty and why adding more legislators because of the population?
It's not the adding of legislators, legislators, it's the reapportionment. It's all... your US House of Representatives is based off of your population. And so if we don't get a complete count here, it'll show a lower population. We could stand to lose a representative. It happened in the twenty-ten census and it was a direct... It was a big shift seen on the east as a direct result of Hurricane Katrina, where a lot of people moved from that state and they actually lost representation in the House of Representatives. And a lot of that population moved to Texas and Texas actually got more representation. They got four new representatives that were taken away from other states. So it's important to get our population counts correct so that we can get and hold our representation. The Senate, the state senate is two per state. That's not... that's not going to change, but the House of Representatives, it could affect...
And that can also change and sway elections. That's what I'm saying. I just was curious.
And it's to make sure that we're representative. If we don't have our population counts showing what we actually have here, we could lose representation in the House of Representatives.
Well, let's hope this count goes good and we can get the funding past our borders. Because it seems like every piece of funding that we try to get, we come to that border over here by San Diego, it stops at Riverside. Nothing ever hits Imperial County. And I know this is being broadcast, but that seems to happen every year. All we get is higher gas prices, everything goes up here in Imperial County, but we don't ever get the help from anybody else. So let's hope this is a good thing. I agree with Mr. Dale on this. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. So moving on, consent agenda. So all items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council by one motion. Without this question, should any council member or other person request an amendment be considered separately? That item will take it up at that time, come by the mayor.
Make a motion, but I need to pull warrant eight seven two oh nine.
Okay. Okay, so we're pulling warrant eight seven two zero nine and then a motion for rest. Motion of second, please vote.
All right, I may have a motion to approve warrant eight seven two oh nine to Mr. Alparano.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion of second, please vote. Okay, motion passed. With that, we are moving straight on to H two, correct? Is this the way it works? We just butt, skip over it?
Well, I think with respect to G one, since it is a notice public hearing, there should be a motion to take it away and it should be renoticed.
All right, so we have a... Item was going to be tabled, so...
I'll make a motion.
So we have a motion?
To table and be renoticed.
Okay, so we got a motion to table, renotice G one.
I'll take it.
And I got a second, please vote. Okay, motion passed. And then we'll do the same for item eight one.
Is that also a public hearing? It's not a public hearing, it's an item for discussion and it says direction. There's no action. It's not an actionable item, it's discussion only and it's just council direction. It is your prerogative if you'd like to table that for later, you can.
I'd like to table it, but it's all scheduled to plan, special meeting. Or is that what it would be called or how would we go balance?
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
Inviting the builders or developers. How would I... would that right?
So you're talking about both...
How about workshop?
For impact fees and waste one and sort of cat fees.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. You can direct us to do that and we'll...
Okay.
We'll schedule something out or sit down with council.
That is my direction.
Do we need a motion on that one? No, right?
Well, if you're looking to table this, you want a motion to table it.
All right, so we got a motion to table. Second, H one, a motion of second, please vote. Okay. Looks like that motion passed. All right, so that with that, we'll move on to H two, discussion action portion of the McCall drain number five at the cross elementary school site.
Sir Mayor and council members, Imperial School District and City have worked very closely in order to underground the portion of the MacCal drain number five at the cross elementary site. In this case, the district will pay all costs associated with design, construction, cooperation, and maintenance. Such work shall begin on execution of this agreement and shall be diligently pursued to completion. The open drain facility to be underground is around eighty by six hundred, as shown on your exhibit. So that recommends approval of any unit of the district and a review of a segment of MacCal drain number five. I'll stay for any questions that we may have.
Do we have any questions? This is the same drain we always have problems with, right? Backing up into that fork which is the Solder Sol.
Correct.
Okay, so after we do this, we don't have to take care of it?
No.
Great.
We still take care of it.
I thought they were doing it all.
Just their section.
Is that...
Just their section.
Just their section, okay.
Ours is still ours.
All right, good. All right, do we have any questions for that? Seeing no questions?
I'll make a motion to approve H two. Number one, approval of memorandum of understanding for the Imperial Unified School District.
You got a motion?
Second.
I have a second, please vote. Motion passed.
Making a motion to approve H two. Approval of an agreement between Imperial Navigational District and City of Imperial.
Got a motion?
Second.
Yes, second, please vote. All right, motion passed. Looking into H three, discussion action, engineering design services for the twenty twenty overlay improvement project at intersection of Eight Boulevard and Cross Road. I'm sorry, Park Road.
Mr. Mayor, on staff fees in RFP for design services for the A and A Park, we received three proposals, one from L.C. Engineering, another one from Dynamic Consulting Engineering, and third one from B.J. Engineering. B.J. Engineering, it's withdrawing their proposal. Therefore, staffs recommending the project to be awarded to L.C. Engineering. This fiscal impact is thirty-three thousand nine hundred dollars from L.T.A. Mission D. And it's that recommends award the project to L.C. Engineering Consultants.
Do you have any questions on this? The same area that Daryl was talking about last time?
Correct, yes.
It won't address any of that?
Right, we will address a small section of about a hundred and thirty-four feet going south.
Right, it will address a, a small section of about a hundred thirty-four feet going south, we're trying to do that, a right turn lane.
Okay. But it still won't stop people driving that, a dirt bank drive.
We'll, we'll try our best.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so, uh.
I'll make a motion.
You got a motion?
Second.
I have a second, so please vote. Motion passed. It's a little quiet, Daryl. Alright, so motion passed, moving on to H four, I hope he's not watching. Discussion action, the water treatment GAC system. Jackie, you guys spend more money?
Yes, sir. Uh, this item is for the replacement of the carbon inside the GAC filters that we installed last year for the security of TTHMs, uh, due to the violations we were having. The carbon has to be changed out annually, uh, with the engineering firm who was elected to change it out between the second and third quarter, that way, third quarter being our highest level of TTHMs, we would receive most benefit from it. It only lasts about a year, that's about all of the, you know, thing in there, so this will become an annual expense, and we'll be bringing it back to you, uh, every year moving forward. Uh, we had budgeted this as a single line item, and this requested the state that we were building those to show that we had the money to maintain it moving forward. Uh, and we will show that again next year, and the budget will see this item come up again, so. The request is to change eighty thousand pounds, which is what it takes for all four of the vessels that are over there, and, uh, we, it takes about six weeks, so we know this. They get second quarter samples for samples yesterday, and third quarter will be in two and a half months, and it takes about six weeks, so that should put the damage just about three weeks before our next samples, which is basically ideal. And the dollar value in that is a hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars. The next time, it may not be quite this high, because it, it can be regenerated, when the carbon comes out, they can send it off, and it can be regenerated after, they have to do some testing on it. Then we simply pay regeneration fees, and if we were trucking and storing and storing out, if it can be regenerated, we'll be doing this same thing again.
So we, whatever we're taking out, we're gonna send that out to get regenerated?
If, if it can be.
If it can be?
Yes.
So we might pretty much have a backup stocking?
Both will be, but, if everything works out right, and what I've been told by those that, that are ahead of us in this, is typically you can get it to regenerate four times, which means eight, eight years from now, you would actually have to buy another load, and then another load. Between here and there, this will go to, uh, Phoenix area, it'll be looked at, if it can regenerate, it'll be regenerated, it's basically ours, it'll then be trucks to Santa Fe Springs, and Santa Fe Springs will be put in storage till we're ready for next year. And it's yours every time it moves around, they don't intermix it with anyone else, let's see if I understand.
Any questions? That was my only one, I wasn't back to that, remember hearing about repurposing, yeah, regeneration, so that was the word I was looking for. Alright, so, see no questions?
I'll make the motion approve.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second, please vote. Motion passed. Moving on to H five, discussion action, maintenance of equipment, Levactor Truck.
Um, Mr. Mayor and Council, Levactor Truck, uh, well, basically it broke down last week, obviously we had, they were making some timber even better, came through, come up, took a look at it. Uh, it, it's in need of quite a few repairs, actually, uh, it's the, the large pump on the bottom that provides the pressure to the jet line and draw the water, which your high load of excavators is in the process of going out. We have replaced this once before, uh, it's, it's a very common wear item for this particular piece of equipment. You can buy it new and get a two-year warranty, you can buy used and get a one-year warranty, uh, it costs us exactly half, so it doesn't make any sense to equip a light vehicle unit, take your gamble in a year, it'll be more than a year great, if not, it's gonna be a day next year. So, the last one lasted three years, the first one came on the truck, it was just about five, so, uh, there's a list of parts there, this also includes some pine materials, our paper equipment to come down, and work on our shop. Uh, with our guys, we provide additional management, they can have the expertise to have it hook in and out, and it's done here at our shop, versus have to pull the truck, two of our.
So we're saying we don't make, not, not labor?
We say we don't labor, we utilize our staff and the shop.
You hear that? So eighteen thousand dollars in eight years, I mean, it's not bad.
It's not bad.
I don't think it's anything.
Any questions? I'll make the motion.
Second. You got a motion and a second, please vote. These are those trucks that keep our sewer lines clean and keep everything moving.
Everything moving.
That's great. Thank you. Alright, thank you, Mr. Tucker. Now the motion passed. Alright, so with that, Jackie?
Okay, with that, the next item?
H six, uh, discussion action, the water treatment plant updates and SCADA system.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, again, this is an update of the SCADA system, uh, the SCADA system was put in, if you recall, about four or five years ago. It was one of the things that we, we had told the state that we would do prior to bringing on the GACs. It was a requirement for monitoring, uh, so that we have the twenty-four hour monitoring around the clock versus putting people there twenty-four hours around the clock. Uh, what it is basically is the, the system is, is starting to get old, uh, we do not have a backup for it, it's a standalone system. They're recommending that, that we have a backup server for it now, and the, the one that we have is starting to produce a blue just can or our system. Alex is taking a look at this from an IP perspective, and he kind of reviewed it for us, uh, said he didn't see anything very wrong with it, because most of what they're talking about, I have no clue. I see reports on the front side, but how this works on the back, I don't fully understand. So, having said that, um, this is for them to come down, uh, present us with a backup unit, a backup power unit, and server, replacing all the upgrades of the software, um, then it's a thirty thousand five hundred dollars.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay? Do you have any questions on this?
Yeah. What did I say? He said thirty.
I, I make the, so, motion thirty-eight thousand five hundred for SCADA system.
Alright, looks like we have a typo.
The, uh, the total amount, uh, should be thirty thousand five hundred dollars.
Thirty, authorized thirty-eight thousand five hundred, that's fine, uh, we'll just not spend the other, yes.
Mr. Tucker, your motion still stands?
Yes.
Got a motion? And a second, please vote. It was for thirty thousand five hundred.
Correct.
Okay, motion passed. I think this is great that we can do it at house with RIT personnel.
Well, the problem here is, uh, we have an issue, um, months ago, remember? And then we reviewed the existing hardware, and we submitted a recommendation to, um, to place, uh, the servers with more than a dozen. That was the one that we have before, where, okay, but for a wastewater and wetter tank, it needs to have some better.
Forward to that, thank you.
And that's right, it's for two servers, this, this is just one machine, it's two, two servers, software and labor.
Good. That motion does pass, so Jackie, H seven, discussion action, purchase of equipment, public services.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor and Council, again, this is to, uh, reallocate some line items within the maintenance budget to an equipment purchase. Um, we have a small backup pump over there, it's a four inch block, I couldn't, I don't know if you can say that. Uh, and, well, let's just put it the way, the crank is not actually just going round and round, the cord was going round and round, up and down, in and out. So the unit is no longer repairable, uh, we've had it for eight years, we got it made face used to, uh, hold a use agreement with Godwin. Anyway, uh, that means we do not have a backup pump that will need the pump, so you can hold manhole or water pump, and now, now it's, it has all for misuse. So what, because we have a little bit of surplus in the, the maintenance accounts of both water and wastewater, we're asking to reallocate that, the line item we put in purchase, and then to purchase this particular pump. Uh, we did not go out to bid for this, as the pump is, I mean, supplier has a GSA number, and by that, we, we, the B S R take care of through the state, so that we can purchase it straightforward.
This is the same pump we used last week?
It will be identical to that.
Okay.
Ours, ours, we rented that one, and then, uh, basically the one we're gonna buy is the identical to that unit we used last week.
Worked the way we wanted to, right?
Yes, right, same, same, almost exact same unit as, as the one we rented last week.
Alright, all of our, you got a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, I amend.
Got a motion? And a second, please vote. I'm glad you had the pump, because Sunset Ranch would have been, wow, a truck.
It would have been better if we had our own, but we found that Godwin had to take care of it, and speaking of Sunset Ranch.
Okay, so we got one more.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay, we got approval, uh.
Sixty-four thousand five hundred thirty dollars.
Okay, you got a motion to approve item number two?
Second.
Second? You almost didn't get it.
I almost didn't get it.
So these are those kind of purchases that we have to make to keep the city going, keep things going. Motion passed. Okay, moving on to H eight, discussion action, the emergency repairs to sewer manhole sinkhole at fifteenth and N Street. Jackie?
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, last week we were called to a sinkhole at fifteen and N, you have a picture?
Deb's turning me on, yes.
Okay, well, here they come, hold on. Okay, anyway, we were called to a sinkhole, we had the guys out surveying, we got new mapping in from Women Associates.
We need for it to be, there we go.
What happened? Is there any still? Hello, hello?
You speak?
Steven, I didn't touch you, I think you quit. I'll talk about it.
Oh, there you go, I don't know about that.
So, a little bit, last week, we, the guys were out surveying the street area at fifteenth and N, uh, we were calling over, uh, we were seeing the maps from Women Associates for the new, uh, system and updated mapping. Now, while they were out surveying, they found a sinkhole at fifteen and N, right next to a sewer manhole. Um, you can see the photos here, what had happened is the line right outside of the manhole collapsed, it started sucking the soil in, and was taking that dirt and soil down to the wastewater treatment facility. The city manager came out, took a look at it, authorized through emergency action, the whatever necessary was to do to replace and repair these. Uh, it took about two and a half days, we replaced that manhole, and the next one down, which was found to be in the same shape, but it just had not sucked the dirt in yet, but it had that back. And A R Construction was called, they came in, set up bypass pumping, uh, started digging it out, after the I I D spent a little bit of time stabilizing the hole, um. The power pole next to it was within about four, five feet of it, they had to stabilize the pole before we could go down in the ground and make the repairs as needed. It turned out that we could use the base of the, the, uh, manholes, and we just had to change the shafting to come up, the sidewall shafting is what was bad. It involved manhole. So, with that, we are asking you to approve the declaration of emergency. Um, our best guess at this point in time is somewhere between thirty-five thousand and fifty thousand dollars to make these two repairs. And when we have a final, we'll bring it back to you for confirmation, if you have a vote.
So. Hang on. Got a motion and a second? And vote? So, but we're not done yet.
Now it's ongoing right now, so we'll, we'll bring that back to the council.
Motion passed.
This ratifies my declarations.
Yes.
We have to do it then, if it wasn't something related to that. The sinkhole, I was a teenager.
Yeah. I was lucky, unlucky to actually be there to see that, that's a big hole. Didn't spell very good, but it is what it is.
It's what it is.
Uh, with that, moving on to H nine, discussion action, city hall repairs.
Mayor and Council, we've had, uh, I just. Um, we've had some, uh, ongoing issues with city hall, obviously. You, you know that at one time we had some repairs to make to bathrooms, uh, lack of eighty, ADA restrooms, we have some additional things happening down there. As a result of ongoing money that is being sunk into a very old building that's, uh, long past its, its useful life, probably, I've asked, uh, Jackie and some of his folks to come in and present to the council. Some of the issues that are there, some of the things that they see, uh, so the council can begin thinking about how they wanna move forward, whether that's, uh, demolishing that, doing like selling it, staying there, going someplace else, um, we're gonna need to start thinking about that, so I'll turn that over to, to Jackie, who's out with a comment.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Alan, that's requested the city manager, we have him, through some complications the last couple of weeks, we had to shut down the only ADA compliant bathroom. Uh, we, the lines underneath it, the bathroom, the, the sewer lines are cast iron, they have collapsed under the concrete foundation of the building. This is the second line to collapse underneath there, the first we took out two other bathrooms that were not gonna start a handicap, but they were usable to staff. Uh, this is now the third client that we've gone in, and lines underneath the, the building have collapsed. One of the restrooms we managed to retrofit, it was pumped through the outside wall and around, to keep one of them going, it's a restroom that's for staff only, or for employees only, and the TV side. So you're down to basically one restroom inside of there that's not ADA compliant, and two restrooms that are out in the planning department that are not ADA compliant. I'm not real sure how to fix cast iron, piping under cement slabs, or a whole lot of work, uh, that pours out, the foundation. Uh, at the request of the city manager, we also, uh, wanted to bring back them to you, if you recall, about three or four years ago, if you may remember this. Mr. Tucker, you may, when we had to go in and redo some of the electrical, only a portion of that system that we had redone inside the building was, uh, updated electrical, you still have cloth rack wiring throughout that building, you still use screw-in blast fuses for over half, because if. If we have a problem with that, it, it can be replaced, if there's no going back and retrofitting inside the concrete walls, uh, for the type of electrical, so, remember, it's not, we're not getting the standard construction, the same with buildings, as, as juvenile walls, and new hot chest out. Uh, the walls are poured concrete, or, or solid concrete facing area with, uh, a hybrid siding in some cases, but the bottom line is, it's, it's not too standard to use a normal construction floor, retrofitting under modeling machine. So, those are a couple of.
I didn't, I touched something, I shouldn't. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alex, it's not working though.
Bring that electrician.
Wow, how long, I've been a lot now, hopefully, no, along with that, we did crawl into the crawl space within the alley between the two ceilings, if you recall, it's just, you have a concrete roof, and you have a concrete ceiling, this crawl space, if you change. Some of the metal is starting to rust out in between that, it's concrete, it's metal sitting in there, it's like galvanized metal, you pour concrete on the concrete, they do a concrete facing area on the bottom, it'll blow out again, and you're, you're still starting to rust. Now, four line engineers, and so, we can only pull two, hopefully, five, you're all aware of the wall that continues to crack, uh, right there off of the, the entrance area, or Alexis's other wall. We patch it, it cracks, we patch it, it cracks, uh, so. Do you just need to think about which way you wanna go, and how much money, if you truly want to pour, and if it's what, all you wanted to do, or, is that what you want us to do, keep looking forward, or you want us to start looking to do? It's just here for information.
So, so, um, council, as we look at this, we're faced with both short-term need, a building that is, uh, in essence paid for, but that continues to have problems, and, um. A very good possibility that these problems are gonna only escalate and become more and more and more expensive to, to fix, and a lot of the fixes are workarounds. I mean, these, these are, you know, these are things that, well, let's do this, and this'll make it work for now. At what point do we say, you know, enough, uh, it's time to figure out something else long-term? I don't know what that answer is, there's lots of different options, but one of the obvious options is building a new city hall slash lease department complex, that's a shared. But one of the obvious options is building a new city hall slash police department complex, that's a shared facility between city hall and the police department. Uh, the, the costs for that are, I mean, take your pick, I mean, they're all over the place. Uh, a realistic, um, estimate, the estimate right now, you'd be looking at somewhere around the, the range of fifteen million dollars for a joint police and city hall that is big enough to handle growth over the next twenty years or so and that you can expand when you need to. Fifteen million dollars is a lot of money we don't have, you would have to bond for that. The cost, uh, for your bond, if you're looking at a thirty, let's say a thirty year bond, you're looking at roughly give or take about a million dollars a year payment. Now, that can vary, it depends on your rates and the terms of the bond and everything. If you can go out beyond thirty years, that might reduce it by a few thousand, maybe a hundred thousand dollars or so per year in an annual payment. But you're really realistically, if you're bonding for that amount, you're looking at about a million dollars a year. You've seen our budget, we are lean, uh, we, we bring to you a budget that is, uh, balanced or we're very close to it. Uh, this year, uh, you've got about, uh, ten million coming in and about a little over ten million going out when you take a look at those budget things. So, you ask the question, where do you come up with an extra million dollars a year to pay off the bond? There aren't a lot of grants out there for city halls, in fact, there are no grants for city halls. Uh, there are, uh, very few grants for, uh, public safety buildings, uh, and those grants, uh, most of them we don't qualify for. That's because of the, that wonderful eighty three thousand dollars a year medium income that we have there. That puts us over that, that, uh, that income level, so we don't qualify for a lot of things like C B B G funding, so that other kinds of things that are for lower income communities. Uh, so what do you do? Um, before we start diving into this any deeper, uh, we just kinda wanted to find out, council, we got a problem. Uh, is, is the council committed to us, uh, beginning to investigate and weighing options and bringing ideas and options to you? Um, if that is a direction that we go, there may need to be a shift in priorities where we put our money, uh, because that is a significant investment. And so as we take a look at many other things throughout the community that need to be done, and that's everything from parks and upgrading and taking care of parks, the eighty six entryway and money that goes into beautifying that, and again, all of these projects, we're looking for as much grant money as we can find. And then when grant money isn't available, other creative ways to be able to fund this, in kind, our own work using our own people, we'll continue to do all of that. But part of my concern is, is we're looking at all of these things, throwing in something like a new city hall or new police station. Right now, it looks like that knocks everything out of balance, and so it may require the city council sitting down and making some very challenging, hard decisions about where is the priority right now, what is it that we need most? We can just go out there and find a piece of land and put some, you know, put some portable units if that's what you want to do for city hall. That's the city council's, uh, decision, that's, that's certainly not ours, we'll make some recommendations, et cetera. Um, so that's what we're faced with, obviously, we haven't gone into a lot of detail and a lot of research, we're, we know there's a big problem. We know that every year that we spend in that building uh, is, uh, is a gift right now, and I just, I, I kind of have a feeling, and the more problems we have, uh, the more we realize that this, uh, we're, we're, we're facing a, a quick end to life of this building and being useful, being able to be. It's been red tagged once after the earthquake, um, will it withstand an earthquake? Most people say sure, it's withstand, it's stood earthquakes, uh, but I think there are other issues there, even if it does, that, uh, that will render the building unhavoc.
You know, I've, I've mentioned several times, and I know we talked in the past about, and I know that there's other cities that have done this too, but why aren't we looking at private industry building and release? Um, I don't know if that comes into, uh, problem with prevailing wage, I don't know, I don't see how it can, if you're renting from somebody or leasing unless you're leasing to home. But that certainly circumvents that fifteen million dollars, that could sure be a lot less. Um, but I, I think that this is something that we seriously need to sit down and look at because been on this council a long time, James, we both have, we've seen what that building is and what it is and what we've had to put up with. And I frankly, I hate seeing good money thrown at bad money, and that's just where we're at right now, so, you know.
Mr. Dylan, I, I understand what you're saying, I just had that conversation with somebody this morning. There's a company out there that I was speaking to that would come in and build an entire building and lease it back to the, to the city.
They will, we've had a discussion about that with, uh, police department, some other things. You're, you're almost right back about the same amount as if you bonded and built. Um, when you get into a lease to own, for example, some kind of a lease to own agreement so that eventually we own the building, uh, you do still, uh, deal with things like prevailing wages, uh, potentially, and you gotta look for legalities. There are companies out there that do that, there are others that are willing to do that, but, uh, you're still looking at about the same, uh, close to the same cost. Leasing an office space, a lot of cities do that, they just lease office space that's already existing, and it's just a lease, it's not a lease to own, they just pay rent. Um, we don't have a lot of office space in Imperial to, to rent.
No.
But, could it be done, and it's worth looking at, and we are looking, as you're right.
I think we need to, I think we need to look at it because another part of this too, and this may be something that staff may not like, but we certainly don't have to have a Taj Mahal. We can build something that is reasonable, that we can have somebody build it. But I, I, again, I think that there's avenues out there, but we've seriously got to start looking at something now, because a building is not in good shape.
Let me echo what you're saying there, um, as far as the Taj Mahal, staff actually likes the fact that we're not doing a monument to government or something like that, where you see massive foyers with, uh, with, with marble and it's wasted space. And as we've looked at these quotes, and I've said fifteen million, we're actually looking at things like permanent modular types of buildings and things that they build, uh, uh, for, for a lot less money than what it would cost. It, it's standard stuff that we're, that, that we've looked at and, and across the board, we recognize that if we are to build something or build a lease or whatever it is, it, uh, it has to be scaled way back, it just be good office space that will handle it. Now, there are some special needs that a police department has, and you can't get away with that, the cost or square footage goes up. And oftentimes, just leasing regular office space for a police department as is, there's a lot of modifications that need to be done to that.
Of course.
Uh, in order for it to work.
Of course.
All that said, you all know that, and as far as what the options are, the sky's the limit, we're looking at anything, uh, or we will look at anything. I just don't wanna get too deep into this unless the council's saying, you know what? Time to, time to really stop talking about it and let's start figuring out what our strategy is, timelines.
If, if it was an older building that you were wanting to do a historical remodel of something like that, either or, whether it's in the situation it's at, or if we were going to remodel it, you're going to tap into pretty close to that remodeling, and I, and I mean, that building is, what was it, nineteen twenty? Oh, thirty nine, okay. So even thirty nine, that's a long, long time ago, and so, I, I, I just think we need to start really seriously sitting down and coming up with an idea. And soon.
I agree.
Alexis had mentioned, uh, the idea of grants of being available from libraries. And so we had talked about the idea of maybe switching locations, putting the, maybe moving city hall here and getting maybe trapped, tapping into some of those grants for a new library for city hall is now. If that's where funding's available, then maybe that's a route, either a joint library, police station, or put a police station by itself somewhere, put the library there.
Oh, there are options, yeah, worth, worth looking at.
And I think we should, that's right, we should just, you know, like Mr. Eugenio and Mr. Dale say, we, we do need to explore those options and see what's out there. I know that, like you said, those companies, but still, there might be other companies that are cheaper, we don't know, but.
Tough market here for it, but.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's California. California, so.
So that's all we have on there, it's, it's, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, it's, uh, feels a little gloomy and gloomy, but
Yeah.
We just, uh, present the information and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll start really getting into the options and looking at those and finances and potentials and get created.
Those are parts of it, whether they're in Jackie.
No, but you know what, it's, it's, and, and.
It's true.
And it is true, and the other thing is too, I hope staff understands I wasn't saying they were complaining this is bad building. It's just that I've known, I've seen some buildings built in through county for things that they don't even utilize them for, and they are Taj Mahals. Um, courthouses and fire departments and, and things, but anyway. Um, I'm just saying something that's nice that, 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 that will serve us well, but it's not gonna cost too much.
We have a nice library, looks nice, it's not big, but it's great, serves our purpose or something like that.
But one thing, I, I would say we would get into hundreds of thousands of dollars if we were just fixing the sewer.
Yeah.
The pipes and, and all that underground that's in that, it's gonna be.
Just, just, just for other problems to surface.
Yeah.
Huge money.
Yeah.
Okay.
With that. I guess we'll look into it.
We'll find an option, they're at one million dollar city hall, it's what it costs.
That's it?
That would be, that's not a feasible listing, that's a toilet.
That's it, you're right. Okay, thank you. So, with that, we'll move on to reports, for mail, mayor, mayor and council member report, so we'll start over here on this side, Mr. Eugenio? Okay, Mr. Tucker? Will Stan?
Yeah, I do, I started running some numbers tonight, and it is, I think our citizens in our community, which are, in my opinion, the best in the valley, but, but when we run against hard times, for us as, as a council, make decisions on wastewater and water and everything else, and tonight, this is just one night, it seems like Jackie gets carried away all the time, it's not his fault, it just happens. But tonight, adding that extra fifty thousand at the end, um, we're looking well over three hundred thousand dollars tonight that we're spending. And that money comes from us, all taxpayers, to keep services going, and unfortunately, we, and I hate capping on California, but it's just the truth. It's so expensive to live here. And so, I, I hope people understand and, and I would encourage, you know, this is the last time I ever ran for, or running for council. Join, come to the council, find out what it's about, because it really is hard sometimes, and so.
Not easy to make those decisions.
It's not easy to make decisions, it's not like we're just out here just tossing money out the window, it's, these are the things that have to be done and there's no way around it, so. Anyway, that's all I have, and thank you.
And you know what to add to that is when you look at that sewer line that collapsed, it's well over thirty five years old? And, and what it costs?
Well, the whole entire town, we've got sections that are, what, seventy and eighty years old? Yeah, that's infrastructure that's gonna break, and it's, and again, we get involved with prevailing wages and different things, it's, it's very, very expensive.
Do you still have red brick manholes in this?
Anyway, I don't wanna be a Debbie Downer, but that's, I'm sorry, Debbie.
Well, um, I did get a chance to attend, I know, I'm sorry, apologize for not attending the last meeting, I was at the SCAG conference. I did attend this, the, the safety symposium, traffic symposium, that was great, a lot of great information, uh, that I'll come back and share with staff, we'll give to, which, that, which trap was distributed along. Um, got our book, there was our new updated, updated information, it's outdated information, so, uh, I'm reading that also, but, um, with that, I think, uh, before that, I did get a chance to attend, uh, our last marketings, I was there for an hour, so, I, I did show up. And, uh, great times, but with that, I did also, uh, was there working alongside with staff, and when I say working, I was there. Um, saw the hard work, great work that went into it, and, uh, it's our staff to keep the city, city flowing, literally. Uh, just the work that they did, get in there, no complaints running out and getting things moving, so. Uh, staff, I appreciate everything you guys do, I know police department's having a hard time right now, with sea living and all that great stuff, but thank you for your patience on that. Uh, I hope our residents understand what it's coming, and it's all good things, so. With that, staff, once again, thank you for everything you guys do, we make the city great, and all of our residents here, so. With that, I'll move on to department heads, and we'll start on this side. Nothing? Come on. It's only eight o'clock, twenty five, we gotta stretch this out. New order? Nothing? Alex?
Nothing.
Something? Alright. Evan?
I have nothing to ask.
Wow. Jackie, you already got a lot of stuff, but.
Life's good.
Life's good, okay. Chief? Okay, chief? Alright. Dennis? Debbie? Mr. Trevor?
I think you've heard enough of me.
Okay, so we have, uh, you do a chamber today, Mark?
I was, I was gonna say life is good, just like Jackie, but I wanna add something, because Jeff brought this up about the living in California. And there's a new assembly bill that they're trying to get going to tax water, uh, connections A B two seventeen. And it's just gonna make it more expensive, and obviously, it probably doesn't, uh, signify where the money's gonna go, it'll probably go in the general fund, but it won't come back to the city of Imperial to help us pay for, for all these requirements they put on there, so it's just something else that we need to watch, we got it at the chamber as far as it's taking, you know, a stand on it, we're gonna be opposed, sending a letter of opposition to that. So, just to bring that up, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, so moving right along. Kevin Luna? David? Lexus? Chris?
I was normal.
Wow. Alright, so with that, you didn't make it no fun, uh, I'll, let, go to the feet, thank you.